Vice Mayor Lynn Jewie.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Landry.
Here.
Councilmember Robert Spaulding.
Here.
Councilmember Enes Bini.
Here.
Mayor Chris Howey.
Here. Right into item number five, which is 2018-2019 budget discussion. I think we should start with Boyd giving us an update if there's anything that's changed since we last met. And go from there.
If we can't start with a discussion on the MAC bids.
Absolutely.
This is what I'm going to try to send you guys.
When you say MAC bids, what the?
Specifically? The repairs, the $300,000 project. I think that's what I'm down here. In a nutshell, bids came in, we had eight contractors on site, did the pre-bid meeting and everything, and we had one contractor submit a bid. Interestingly enough, Range Brothers, their estimator is the one that was used during the PNA. And that is the document that we use to estimate the cost of the projects that we wanted to try to accomplish. Regardless of that fact, ultimately, the bids for the project that was approved through the Fire Marshal's office and the renovations to the floor and the auditorium and office area came in, if they do both of those projects, at $500,000, $2,000.
Surprise.
Well, it was. I expected it to be over four or two, but I didn't expect it to...I expected it to be over three, but not by $200,000.
Not by $200,000.
So with that...
That doesn't include the new heating and air conditioning.
So that, since the last meeting, we also did get hard numbers from the sprinkler company. And we are pretty close, we estimated about $70,000. And that's what it would take to do the back. The majority of the work on the alarm system will need to be done. Even in the back part, we'll have to put the smoke and heat monitors in that area. So when it's all said and done, what won't be done on the front end will be just a little over $70,000 to do as we discussed.
And that's in that 502 number though? Right?
No. That's just what it would take to do the front part.
The front part's in the budget.
Right. The front part's in 502. Now, I would point out that what's not in the original scope, when we did the resolution, we listed out the things we were going to try to do as we worked through that project. The one thing that we didn't consider was the requirement for a fire separation wall. So that's something that wasn't accounted for in the 300. And then the chair left for one of the options. We actually bid two different options, and they came out to be about a $1,000 difference. There's not...there's not a lot in that bid that wasn't anticipated, but there is that. And the bid documents aren't detailed enough to separate out the cost for that wall, but we can't do that. But that's something we have to do, so. So we can leave that to...
Well, I think I have to ask.
Going into those discussions, each other counts.
Go ahead. I'm looking at the...I think I'm looking at...let me ask you, but the bid amount, fire separation slash civil slash restroom, that's the restroom up on the second level, is that?
Well, that was...the two options were to incorporate the existing restroom at the top of the stairs. Or renovate the what used to be a restroom.
Right.
Those two bids were within $1,000 of each other.
Oh.
So, but that is all of that project, fire separation, all of the civil work out back that keeps the water from going under the building. Everything that was in that plan submitted to the Fire Marshal was included in that cost.
So this would be the preferred route, assuming that finances were not an issue? Because it provides access to the second...second level? Not the second level, but the next level.
Depending on the long-term plan.
Right.
Originally, if we were just going to use the lower level, first option would probably be to reestablish that old bathroom. If the move would be to remain to retain use of the rest of the building.
This is the...
In real time or in the future, then...
Then costing no factor of that, but it's an easy decision, assuming we can fund it. Okay.
May I chime in?
Yes.
I think we have to decide now as we go, because what we're here for is budget. And getting granular on this is a red herring, I think, for us tonight, getting granular about ways to solve this problem. It's a $200,000 difference for what? You know, we talked about in the prior budget meeting, so there's $200,000 bucks right there, that we have to decide, we're in or we're out. We could decide we're in and then decide to get out later. I mean, that's possible.
The difficulty there would be letting a contract for a particular scope and amount.
If we budgeted tonight, I'm not suggesting that you don't, but if we budgeted the $500,000, somehow the magic money, but chose to not tell the contractor they wanted bid, then it doesn't go forward, right? Our making a budget decision doesn't say your contract goes forward. It's not an agreement, because we wouldn't even do that, it's not...
We do not have to let that contract.
Right. So we have that option if we keep this on the table for now, and then come back to this when we're looking at the bigger picture. Because the discussion for how we deal with this problem is not a minor one. This is a big problem.
It's...it in a nutshell.
Well, we have some other issue, other items that are...were not agreed to include, I think.
Right.
So why don't we just add this to the list and see where we go with it? And that would be $200,000, I guess, right?
The difference.
$235.
$200,000, the total is, yeah.
They give $35,000. Sprinklers is in the back. Plus, we requested a $6,000 increase in the expenses. Relax me. Was this the original range?
Well, yeah, the bids coming in, I mean, I think that's something that...
Can you show me where on the capital sheet that the original $300,000 we had agreed to is reflected in the current budget?
Yeah, it's two, I believe it now shows $200,000 anticipating, because we anticipated spending some of that this year.
Okay, so it's a carryover.
Right. We would spend some of it this year, and that's just an estimate. The budget can be adjusted once we see exactly how much was spent and how much is left.
Is that all we budgeted for last year was $100,000?
No, we originally budgeted $300,000.
$300 in this year, current.
So theoretically, that's a carryover.
$200 is a carryover. If we don't spend up to $100, we'll adjust the budget to carry over the additional unspent.
Correct. So the original $300 doesn't need to be...theoretically, doesn't affect the capital. Do we just carry it forward?
Right. It's already in...
Well, it rolls back into the...in the way this is computed, we're assuming that that $200,000 rolls back into the fund balance, so we reappropriate it, so...
But you're working off the fund balance that didn't have that $200, as you budgeted last year.
Well, it does now, and this budget, it now does. The reestimate does include the decrease of that $200,000.
When we reestimated, then we would only spend $100,000. Then that added an additional $200,000 back into fund balance for this current year. And then next year, we take that $200,000 back down, because it doesn't roll over. It has to revert to fund balance.
But the original $300 is reflected.
Yeah.
We're not...we don't need to add any of that $300.
That's all accounted for, either this current year or next year, and can be adjusted to make sure it's fully accurate when we close out the year.
Because it's not...if somebody were to look at this, it's not 100% clear on this, because you only have the $200,000, $200,000, $15,000. Is the 15 for the window repair, is that not reflected in what we're doing to update?
15 for the window.
In the capital.
That's a new project on the capital for '18, '19.
Is that reflected in the quotes we got? No.
No. That's a facility maintenance project for next year, that's not engines.
My question is, when we bid this out, they aren't touching on this?
No.
Okay.
So what you have is the updates, including the things that were discussed at the last meeting, which would be a 2.5 increase for wages, an increased donation to the Lions Club, $10,000 contribution to AIGIS, centennial celebration increase of $30,500, state supplement pay, there was a mistake discovered that's been corrected, there's $70,000 for the MAC sprinkler repair to the rear of the building, and then $6,000 increased in utility costs at MAC, and then other funds.
Why was...
2.5 additions, well.
Why was not the COLA increase reflected originally in the budget?
Because it had not been discussed.
Okay.
We didn't...it's the same process last year.
Where is the $10,000 that was requested for the equipment for the fire station?
It's not.
Is that not in there?
Yeah, I don't know how to miss that.
Well, the other thing is, I think you're $10,000 over on the centennial.
Oh, we're going to the capital, the $10,000, I'm sorry.
As we talked about taking out capital.
It is in the...on the next page.
Actually, we talked about taking it right out of the construction.
Right.
I think you're $10,000 over on 755. My understanding of the conversation was they presented us with a total budget of $40,500, and they said they would come up with $20,000 in sponsorships. So the deficit...
And if you look at the bottom of page one, where the revenues are, you will see that there's an increase in $20,000 for donations to the CCC.
Okay. I didn't know what the CCC was.
The separation of expenditure and revenue is supposed to just showing...
Right, but net. My point was, they asked for a total of $40,500.
Right, and it was already $10,000 in the budget. So I like...
Oh, okay, okay. All right, got it. So net, it's a 20...it's a...if there's already...it's only $10,500 add. Okay.
And if you, again, if you move down, you also see that we listed as donations, but there's sponsorships they anticipate within the additional 35 total.
Is in there.
Contribution for the MAC. And again, these are items that were discussed.
So it's not...
So it was put in here to illustrate how to look back.
So the addition, in addition to the 181, you're talking about $200,000 additional for the MAC project.
Right.
Which brings that to 381,577. The...as this stands right now.
We also had mentioned the video for taping in here.
No, we haven't got to that.
Did we ever figure out cost?
Every time we've talked about it in the past, it was around 10 grand, is what I remember from talking on the sheet. You're saying prices that were...
Talking with Dan, I think we...
It's more less than...
Yeah.
I mean, Dan's got the iPad and whatever, it can't be...
Yeah, I mean, that's fine, just those are the numbers we had kicked a long time ago.
I think we...I don't know if we want to get into that, because of the state that the budget's in. I mean, it's something I think we need to do, but I think it's something that will fall below a $10,000. I think it'll fall below a $2,000 fee to make it work well. So something that could just probably come out of budget for Town Hall somehow, perhaps, if we decided to do that. So tell me whether or not it's a good idea to do this now. I looked at the numbers that presented, this is all prior to the MAC stuff, and just a general overall idea, is it a good...is now a good time to present that? So I'd like to get to the end of this, and then we can get granular on anything we want to, but as we talked about them last week, I wrote the asked items down. The AIGIS, the MAC sprinkler, the MAC utilities, the fire department equipment, the centennial, and salary increases. I think I had salaries down on my list, and all of this was just hypothetical. One, I had 2.7, and I think we'd be down to 2.5 now. 2.5 for salary, so mine's just a little bit higher than that. That put us, doing some math, at about $50,000 getting into general fund for operating expenses, based on just some general math that I did. $50,000, which if I understand correctly, is something you'd never do, do operating out of general fund.
That is the goal.
Okay. So with this in mind, these are the reductions that I can bump off, and I'm just tossing these out here. The first one, I asked Boyd, I don't know if you guys have a find out about this, so I'm just going to list these quickly, we can get granular if you want to or not. Scale the library carpet project this year, scale the MAC, it's been a little while, but take $8,000 off of that. The MAC light speakers, remove with suggestion that existing operating board try to find ways to raise funds for those things. The MAC board, try to raise funds for those speakers. Capital projects are generally the easiest thing to raise funds for. You know, something very specific that someone can pay for. The playground equipment, the $40,000 for the playground equipment, since we are spending $400,000 on driver field, we could maybe put that off for a bit, that would knock $40,000 off of it. This is the Tupperlands playground. Save it until next year, since we're spending so much on parks and riding.
The phase two of that.
The centennial, I, you know, I've talked to a couple of folks, including talking to Paul Hendricks, I think the ask for that is not something we should be doing, I don't think we should spend that kind of money on party. And I think any money that we spend for the centennial ought to be one of the sorts of things that are capital related, that are asset related for the town in the future, and that parties and things ought to pay for themselves, because that can be scaled back. I think that $20,000 is not...I don't think that's something we should be doing. The MAC utilities portion that we added to $6,000, there are some just business management practices that could account for that, I think, as well as some release. The...I don't think we should do the AIGIS donation, I've done a lot of research on AIGIS, looks like a great theme they do, but it just doesn't make sense for our town to be doing that, especially with our budget as tight as it is. And the MAC sprinkler thing, assuming that we even get to that second part, we don't have to deal with it with the first part, I talked to the nonprofit folks, the Singing Mountain, and asked if they'd be willing to raise a little more money for that to lower the town's burden on that. The town's burden is going to be $35,000, and they, in theory, agreed to try to bring what they were going to raise in additional aid to bring it up to $15,000, so the town would cost less. If we did those things alone, that's a $94,000 reduction in the asks, and brings us in line with what it is we said we wanted to do. And it's a little bit everybody taking some of the...taking some of the heat. And then the adjusted asks ends up being $54,881, but that's probably just a tad high, because I did 2.7 as opposed to 2.5.
So in your scenario, the MAC, additional money for the MAC's out?
I did not say that. That wasn't even...
Just to ask you, now, I'm asking a question, are you counting the additional money for the MAC or not in there?
It wasn't...you know what I just talked about, because it didn't exist until just now, and that's a discussion that we need to have, and so that's why I think we need to have it on a higher level as opposed to a granular level just now.
All right. I very much disagree with your numbers. I think our operating revenue is 7.659, take out all capital. Our operational costs are 7.332, which means we're not dipping into reserves. In fact, we have a $327,000 excess before you get into the capital of 1.673 million.
All capital. And that's...
So then you ask about anything?
Let's go back and find the numbers. Should we... In the handout that you got too, is the revised capital and revised fund balance sheet straight to the back.
You'll have to forgive me to work up what we had.
That's based off of the information that Lloyd talked about a moment ago.
Go to your general revenue tab.
No, I did not do that.
I'm not...no, that wasn't a question, I was directing the council to go to the general revenue tab. Last page. General fund. You got the $9,015?
Hold on, so... Give us some of the general fund down.
It's in the front.
Minus the 1,356,400. Gives you the net of $7,659,000, which was my revenue number. If you take the $9,015,000 minus the 1,356,400 coming out of fund balance for the cap, you know, for whatever it is, you have a total revenue of $7,659,167.
Can you say that again, Chris?
If you go to the last page of revenue and look at the total revenue, last column, $9,15,566. Subtract the money coming out of the revenue balance, $1,356,400 leaves you with $7,659,167. Then go to your expense. That is third tab in. If you look at, obviously balances, the $9,15 on the first page, and then the two lines right above that show that we're taking 1.3 out of the capital, fund balance, and we're taking 376 out of revenue. That's where you get your not pulling out of capital. So you have about 300, my estimate after these things were added, 327,000 to the good. So I do not see the dilemma that Dan does.
The capital is broken out the way it is because it is operational capital of things that we generally would not expect to spend fund balance on. There are short live equipment, there are vehicle replacement contributions and all of those things, so we still have...
But it's not fund balance appropriate capital?
No, that's...
So what many even says in the thing, if you took what the budget says, capital outlay, fund balance appropriate, $1,307,000, and you subtract that, that's a different number.
Right.
That 300 and something in capital outlay operational is kind of where the swing lies. And that has been our policy and our practice, separate those out and not use fund balance for those costs.
Didn't we say the primary reason for that, though, was the bringing on the crew, firefight crew?
That capital outlay operational, $376,000, there are a variety of computers, there are some few radios, some software at the rate, the vast majority of it is the contributions we make to the vehicle replacement firm.
Explain to me again, then, the impact on, because I don't understand it that way.
Here it is. There's an easier page to see this.
On the last page.
When we bring in the fire crew, it's early, that's an operational cost that we did, but in this current year, right? How did we pay for that?
We have covered those costs by a budget amendment.
Right.
Or a will. We anticipated those costs for those personnel to begin in this coming budget year.
But so that exceeded the virtue last year's budget. So that's an increase in operational cost that we have covered by reducing fund balance. Or we will.
No, because revenues were higher than we estimate.
We will probably be able to cover those.
Out of operational costs?
Right.
Even though they weren't budgeted? Okay.
Now, moving forward, our estimates on growth were based on actual revenue, and that's, you know, another one of the...
So we're not...we're not...I got to go back, I got to get straight. Because in the first, the firefight, it was a calendar year this year, and we're dealing with two fiscal years, so we're slipping it. And are we handling it differently one year versus the next?
No, this coming budget year, we will be covering 25% of those costs, plus the difference between three firefighters and three engineer staff.
So where did the money come from in the operational budget? Just more money?
General revenues.
General revenue increase. Well, we have a tendency to underestimate revenue, overestimate expenses, which is fine. I just see the number. I want to know that we're not drawing, because I'm thinking we were drawing down the fund balance in order to cover that second year, that second half of the calendar year, but we're not doing that. Okay, fair enough.
Fund balance, if you look as it stands now, fund balance is covering capital costs, if you want to make that argument, that's valid and sound. Some of those capital costs are what we consider operational, and historically, we have not covered those with fund balance. We did last year.
We did last year.
And the year before.
No, not those costs.
Because we were purposely bringing those things back?
Not, not this cost. This column of capital, we have not covered with fund.
That's the, the...
That's part of what you're including in your, it is capital.
Right.
And it's also, again, I'm not even going to point that it's accurate to say that it's all capital. But what's in this column and the reason we separate it out is we generally do not cover those costs with fund balance. We try to ensure that that's covered by revenue.
But we have covered the cost of the, the additional burden to the budget of the firefighting crew coming in early. And it's covered with operational revenue. And it's budgeted in next year.
Understand, I got that, I got that part. But I want to make sure it's how it's funded, not whether it's covered or not. I want to make sure it's...
I mean, money's semi-fungible in this, but yes, is the answer. Carol, unless you disagree?
I don't think semi-fungible is a word.
I didn't say semi-fungible. I just said fungible. I said money is fungible in this process.
It's, it's going to be difficult to definitively say until we close this year. But we did not increase, we did not increase revenue to account for those positions. And an increase in revenue may cover those costs this year. But we still haven't, we still haven't...
Right now, that's what we're covering.
And that's, that's, that's where we are with, with this. We're, if, if you look at, and again, Chris is right. If you look at capital, that's, but this three hundred thousand dollar plus is exactly what that swing is. Using fund balance to cover these, these expenditures is something...
And those, and those expenditures are not necessarily related directly to the increased budget.
It's these. These are just random.
These are, again, computers, there are a couple radios, software upgrades. The vast majority of it is vehicle replacement. Planning for future vehicle replacements as we've gone through many years.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not arguing that point. I just think, after looking at these, and I tend to be the most conservative person sitting here financially, we are not in the dilemma that's painted. We're actually in pretty good shape.
One of the other things we discussed was the increased projection in property tax revenue from one percent to four percent. That additional three percent would generate one hundred thirty-seven three sixty-one. I went back to two thousand and ten, took out the year we annexed and took out the reassessment year, and we're averaging about one point two one three three. So direction of the council was where you want to set that, but...
Yeah, it'd be on our, we're budgeting. So it doesn't, the number that's put on here is not an exact number. We do tend to underbudget revenue and we tend to overbudget expenses, which is fine. Last four years I've been on here, that's the way it's worked. But I don't, I don't think, I think the additions we talked about in at least half of the MAC were fine.
Last year was a appraisal year, reassessment. We don't. Theoretically, that, not theoretically, in actuality, the tax rate has dropped and that's a revenue neutral event.
But we kept the tax rate almost exactly where it was.
Okay. We paid out early the remaining of the debt on the high school. As you recall. The increased taxes by...
Thirty-three cents?
Thirty-two cents. Two. What's that?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two minus the fifteen cents that went to the school budget. So it ended up being a net seventeen plus the reassessment.
So the underestimation in the revenue paid for the, basically the surprise in the fire department.
But that...
Now, how does that?
But now we, we know what...
That we know what that is. We've got that covered in there. I know I'm hard on that.
No, no, it's the point we need to hit on.
Because, because it stands to reason you bring, you increase the, the organization role by twenty-five percent? Right. That's a big number. And you would expect that you would have to increase revenue via tax increase in order to cover that. But we're not doing, we're not doing that. And that...
Right, and right now, we're covering a fairly small percentage of that increase.
Right.
But we know...
But it won't be that way for...
In a couple of years, we...
In two years, we're...
Yeah, okay. That'll be a problem for the council of the future. Okay. Now, Chris, to your, using your conclusion, then we're good.
Yes.
Address your opinion on MAC and how that, how that falls in with this two hundred thousand dollars in here. I'd like to address the other points first.
Okay, fair enough.
All, all of them.
The Centennial Committee, which they've added back in here. And I think it's our hundred year anniversary. We've got to put some money and some effort into it. I have no problem with the twenty thousand five hundred that they've requested. Plus they have a ten thousand carryover. Is that what I hear?
It's not carryover.
You already had ten thousand.
They spent some of it, didn't they?
Dave, but it doesn't carry over. Whatever they don't spend this year goes back. This current, this budget we're working on, we put ten thousand in.
For example, parks, just to put on a microcosm. I think we budgeted seventy-five hundred dollars for parks last year. We didn't use any of it. So that goes back into that. Did you... Is this included in this last year's or is this included in next coming year?
Next year.
Okay. Is that in there? Have you estimated the refunds on this? Okay.
That just came in.
Another example, we get, we get with the pool system we're in for risk management, they generally send out a dividend each year based on performance. This one happens to be about twenty thousand, eighteen thousand. And that's not accounted for in budget?
Well, to some extent it is because each year they give us this kind of a dividend back. And so when I do computing the salaries and the benefits, I take, I do take to some extent it into account. I believe this is a little larger dividend than they have paid in the last few years. But I do account for some of that as I do budgeting the salaries.
All right, going back, so I'm fine with the Centennial Committee, which we learned last meeting when they presented the budget. The fire and police equipment, I think we need to do that. And I think that should come out of it. I think it can come out of the...
Did the Centennial Committee present to you what you consider to be an appropriate budget, what you expect from a budget?
Yeah, did last meeting, I think.
That was what you, that was appropriate? You don't think that they, that...
Okay. The MAC, we added the six thousand expense and then our portion to help them with the MAC sprinkler. And what else do we have? That was it really for the main, I mean, other than the coal and that stuff.
Well, we had the...
Aegis, well, the Aegis, this is what I want to talk about. I'm willing to get rid of that, especially after hearing the chief talk about it that he didn't think that was appropriate at this time, which I'm fine with. But I'd like us to consider giving nine to ten thousand to the MEF because they are, in talking to them, they are eleven thousand dollars underneath what they need to keep the art teachers and the STEM teachers at the elementary schools. And we don't give a whole lot to our schools up here. And I think it's a minimum we could do to make sure that we maintain art teachers that have worked there and been there and the STEM teachers there. And I'm comfortable with those additions plus the coal increase of two point five percent. That we're well within where we need to be. The MAC then is a different situation. I, my calculations in doing it is we still have a hundred thousand dollars to the good. So to me, it then becomes a, wherever we find an extra hundred thousand if we want to go forward with the MAC, if that's the way this council wants to go.
In, in light of the directive I've prior council before, I don't know exactly when this was voted on, that the thirty-five percent reserve was the important number. Do dipping below that thirty-five percent for one time capital expenditures for when you're, when you're taking care of deferred maintenance on asset or something, that you're fixing something that that's not going to happen all the time, seems to be reasonable based on council decision if you need to do that because you're not going to do it all the time. But since we're doing that, and if I'm not mistaken, Boyd mentions it in the overview in his summary, and we've added to that, and we were approaching thirty-three percent in, in the summary. Does, I love, I honestly think that the town ought to be in a situation where we do contribute to the schools, but only if we are doing it responsibly based on a budget that's maintaining what it is we said we were going to do. I think making donations to anyone when you're already dipping below thirty-five percent doesn't make sense. And no, no question, but I think it's not just the future councils. It's, it's citizens and it's the current council and it's... I thought you and Chris said we shouldn't go below thirty-five percent.
I never said that. I said we need to get down to at least that because any additional money we have in there is basically overtaxing people and holding on to the money.
So we're there. We're there?
You believe we're there. I don't believe we're there.
Our, our town manager and our accountant are telling us we're there. It doesn't matter. These guys are the experts and we should listen to them.
Listen to them. I disagree with what you're saying.
Do you disagree with what they're saying?
Uh, yes, to a point.
Can you support that with numbers?
Yes, if you look at the last four years, we have underbudgeted revenue each year and we've overbudgeted expenses.
And we've gone down?
Outside of extenuating circumstances. Because that was a plan we started four years ago to get our reserves down to a level. That's why we've been investing in a lot of these capital projects. We are perfectly fine with this budget.
That just below thirty-five percent?
I don't believe it does. I don't believe it will.
Then you're not believing what Boyd and your town manager are saying.
Correct.
Or Carol or your accountant.
Based on history, yes.
Well, yeah, nobody knows exactly.
Yeah, it's a budget.
It's a, it's a guess. I mean, it's a black card.
Yeah.
So they're not... But, but I mean, yes, they are, they are school and all of them.
And they have, we have a huge, huge backstop if it goes the wrong direction.
Which is what?
Eight hundred thousand dollars in budget for driver field. So we cut that project down to half that.
Four hundred thousand.
What's four? No, it's total of eight. We get fifty percent.
Four, four is the only...
Oh, no, it's, yeah, it's fifty percent matching. So we have a huge backstop on it.
And we need that backstop to help us out with the bid that came on the MAC.
If this council decides that they're going to spend the extra hun, what? Two hundred thousand dollars on that project, yes. So we're in a situation, in my opinion, that we have to come up with a hundred thousand dollars because I think we had an extra hundred thousand dollar buffer in there after adding these expenses in and the coal increase.
Was that about a red Cherokee? We didn't laugh much, but we are about a Cherokee. I'm mad enough easily. The contribution, total contribution to the vehicle replacement fund, it's, if it isn't at three hundred, it's pretty close to three hundred thousand dollars. I know it's a dangerous thing to, to, to interrupt something that works so well, but then I have to question whether or not, and I know it's followed to use the red Cherokee as an example.
No, they tell me.
But have we, is it logical to assume that we have, we're overconservative in this estimate?
This current year, we reduced, we looked at all of our stock where we were relative to anticipated replacement costs. And we reduced the contribution by twenty percent to kind of do just what you're saying. We did that this year to make sure we weren't getting too far ahead on contributions for that.
And a big part of this is the fire truck. Or is that what we...
The most recent, the newest one, the one that we have ordered now won't hit until next year.
It's three oh seven.
So before we get to the MAC issue, I think we need to treat that as a separate to this budget. I'm comfortable with the changes made and think we should accept them as is. There's no need for a tax increase. And with the one caveat that we take nine out of the ten thousand to go to Aegis to help out our schools and keep our art teachers in the elementary school and the STEM in the elementary, the kids.
I'll support that. I think there's enough of the fail-safe as you identified.
We will have to look at, at that relative to the donation requirements. And even if we give it as control of the office, we can give it directly to HCD too, if it's a confusion with any other.
I think that's how they're paid, they're paid through HCD.
Well, I would not, but since, just on principle, I'm not against the schools, but I do have, move both the money to municipal money too.
This is a...
An organization we don't control. But I'm not going to get into that argument.
Well, no, and I, and I understand that normally I wouldn't, but they're in a situation where they're going to have to cut some good teachers and take art classes away from the kids in elementary. That's going to do nothing but hurt the schools. And if we got to step up and help, we got to step up and help.
What are we going to do next time, Chris? Because this won't, this won't be the end.
Well, that council can make the decision what they want to do at that time. We just know they're short right now.
Carol?
And I do want to go long record saying I can't support or I do not agree with the four percent projected growth in the property tax. We budget that very closely. And the numbers that Mr. Vio stated earlier were based off of actual experience in growth. It wasn't based off of projections or budgets. It was based off of actions.
I agree. I think you're at least a percentage too high.
It doesn't matter what you believe, it matters what's true. And the closest thing that we can get to truth is from the experts that are paid to give us this information. give us this information.
So the impact of that percent is $1. What are we wrestling with?
What are the taxes, whatever just happened?
37, right, if I'm correct. We projected 1% growth from our current actual revenue after the recession, and we project an additional 1% revenue. The additional 3% will be $137,000.
Is it a percent? I mean, it's not a whole lot of money, I mean, in the scheme of things.
I understand what you're doing, what you're saying, I appreciate that.
And this is a requirement, and again, this is why this book says preliminary as opposed to recommended.
Yes. You remind us of that.
I do. But if council directs, that's what I would ask you to do. If we're directed to increase that projection, then that's what we'll do, but...
I go back, I have to go back to, I'm not satisfied yet on the fire time. I don't see how we're going to absorb that increase without specifically dedicating an increase, a tax increase, to cover that additional cost of magnitude of, I mean, it's a substantial. And maybe I'd need to ask that question. What is the cost of bringing six additional firefighters on?
Nine.
Nine, I'm sorry. And with salaries and benefits and equipment on that.
Indictive time becomes a problem for larger problems that council has to deal with as they go through the term, but that steps down.
Whenever it goes away, we would have asked, we would have had to face that right away.
I understand, but I'm...
No, 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 I agree with you, but I'm also saying there's going to be a bigger, in two years, there's going to be a bigger challenge to make up that additional. And so I, that's why I'm harping on this, I apologize. It just seems like we need to address that additional cost for what it is, rather than making it fit and what amounts to a gift of increased revenue that we didn't expect. I would rather see dedicated funds to cover costs than be known that...
I think we did expect that, because we set the tax rate for it once last year.
Yeah, that, those costs weren't included in the expenditures associated with that.
And I understand it wasn't specific to that issue, but we set the tax rate last year knowing, I mean, this is, again, this is budgeting. This isn't, you know, this is, we need to listen to the professionals, I understand that you're budgeting, it's not an exact science.
I understand that, but firefighting costs a predictable amount of money, and I don't think we have dedicated funds, the revenue that we register tax increases to cover.
Well, you have covered, have you covered it in this budget?
We have budgeted, and all I have is just the salaries and benefits on the new nine firefighters. And so in the 17, 18, the current year budget, we're reestimating $301,000 for those costs. And in the 18, 19, next year's budget, I'm projecting $555,000 in costs.
Now, that's the quickest...
That does not include, it does not include the increase in the, for the three engineers.
But that's because the fire station will actually be open at that time.
Well, it's, but we'll be covering the full year cost.
So...
That is the full cost.
Of those nine.
Of those nine, and we have offsetting revenue for 75% of that.
Right.
This year. So that, so that ultimately around $500,000 a year, once that grant goes away, we'll be in the $500,000 to $600,000 a year.
Right, I budgeted $168,000 in revenue this year and $337,000 in revenue from that grant for next year to offset those. And again, those are our best estimates. I'm not really at this point expecting to get the full amount in this year, because they seem to be running a little slow on our first payment request at this point, so...
So $500,000 and what's the grant?
Something we talked about.
75, 75, 35.
So 25% of 500 is 25,000 dollars.
35.
What's that?
75, 75, 35. And the significance of what you just said is, I mean, to leave us, because if they are running slow, that means this year it's going to be greater than, the action is going to be different than what it's shown. And from our meeting last time, if it doesn't turn out before the end of August, it can't be applied to this fiscal year, to the current fiscal year. So we start out with a little less than we thought.
And you have... And what we're, and what we're doing is, is what would ordinarily be surplus revenue, what, I don't know if it's the right terminology, but unexpected surplus revenue, which we could direct to cover MAC and these other things. We're directing it to the fire department and avoiding actually paying directly for it. And I think that's the wrong thing to do. I think we need to raise the revenue that funds.
I mean, that's all that's... No, no, and I understand it's a legitimate concern, but also if we would not have these expenses as early as we have them, that's...
Right, I understand.
They would have gone for the grant, which is, if anybody argues that the grant was a bad thing, then I'd go, you know, put them on boxing gloves, but...
Yes, it can, but they're here and we're going to keep them here.
Right.
And so that...
Which we had to do for the grant.
So if we, if we increase the fire department by that many people, independent grant, I mean, we would have to raise revenue to pay for it.
Right.
And that would just say we need to begin that process cushion, cushion blow, yes.
Absolutely. Still, we have to figure out how we're covering additional $500,000 to $600,000 in costs.
And I'm not sure how this applies to, I'm not sure how this applies to this budget, to the decisions you're trying to make now.
Right.
Mainly it seems to be two years.
No, I, the big numbers, but I'm not about trying to make this budget.
It's already in there, it's budgeted in there now. So it's reflected in here.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay, I'm just...
But you're going to...
I understand where, I understand where you're going, but it's already in there. It was in there before we got to arguing grants and other stuff, and it was not an issue at that point.
But if we were realistic and said we were going to pay for it now, then I'm free of, that would, that would make these other questions.
Put us in a very, yeah, put us in a very different position.
Modest tax increase to cover the real cost.
I cannot support tax increase.
It's an operational cost.
Interesting. I cannot support tax increase. I'd like to...
I think we're burying our head in the sand on this issue, but I'm through.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the budget with the changes we discussed as reflected on here, with the elimination of the Aegis donation and instead put $9,000 to MEF solely for the purpose of those art teachers and STEM teachers. And if they don't spend it on that, we don't give the money. So it's a specific donation.
I'm willing to vote on it for in discussion.
Do you need more?
I think we need a motion on the contribution.
We got first and second. No discussion.
No discussion. Okay, now, I think we need a motion on the contribution to the school.
Ultimately, just...
Because I think there is this...
There will have to be a separate resolution to affect that contribution. If it, if it meets all the requirements of the controllers, standards and all of that, then there would have to be a resolution to make that donation.
And this is exactly...
We have a motion and a second, so we're discussing, you're not making another motion, are you?
No, I'm just explaining a bit.
So if we follow this up with another motion, explaining what that donation is, or do you want to do that before we vote on the table? Well, I'm asking, let me see what he has.
Well, it's procedure, it's procedure. That's all I, if, if we're going to have a resolution and vote on the resolution to make the contribution, like an appropriation, then I'm okay with that.
Are you okay? The motion that's on the table would budget the funds. Those funds could not be expended until we're transferred, until there's a second action with the resolution.
Which is not further discussion on the motion that's on the table.
We have a centennial coming up. We have one oldest building in this town, and it's the Silicon Mountain Elementary School. And we know it has needs, some of those needs have been met, and we're getting, we're getting there to, when we have an asset like that, Bob's fault, I mean, in particular, the money that, to give $20,000 to a centennial committee when the building that we have closest to being the centennial building needs help, it just doesn't make sense to me. Because we actually have an asset that, that's about 100 years old, and that it is worth more when we're gone than it is right now. A party is a party. A party is done, it's gone. Gaels are fun, but they should self-fund.
Yeah, I thought we were going to bring up the MAC second, as a second.
That is not part of this motion.
It was a part of the motion, or was the intention on that? I mean, I, I fully support the idea of preserving the building. I don't think that the, I think that there is adequate resources to make a decision in supporting that $100,000 overage. I think that we can find that money as opposed to not do anything with this.
Where do you find that?
What are we talking about there?
We're discussing, we're discussing the motion.
We're trying to talk about the budget first and approve that.
Claire, Claire.
And then you brought up another issue.
No, I didn't, I didn't. I didn't. I did not bring up another issue. I clarified what I'm talking about. I'm talking about his motion, which says accept everything that's in there. That means we discuss everything that's in there. One of the things that's in there is $20,000 to go to the centennial committee. That's why I brought that up, specifically it's centennial related. I don't think, I am against his motion. I don't think we should do that. I can't do that. We don't have an extra pot of money somewhere that it's going to come from. We are going below 35%. The council voted and said 35% was what we would go to. The discussions have been had, and you use, if you do dip below, you do it for assets, you don't do it for operating expenses. Chris disagrees, he says it's not. Our advisors say it is.
So the only thing you disagree with is $20,000 going to Centennial? Is that the only thing you disagree with? And you think it should be appropriated for the MAC?
I think we should balance our budget, and anything that dips into the general fund should be asset, should be something that's general fund appropriate. Donations are not general fund appropriate. I'm not even sure that donations are something we should do. And I agree with the sentiment behind it completely, but there are other ways of doing that other than us spending public money that basically borrows it. Why would you do that? What does that mean? Let's have an adult discussion about this, because this is what we're actually...
Because I support it, so I disagree with you, that's all I can say.
Support your disagreement, let me hear it. For what reasons?
Because I think that we should support our schools.
Do you think I'm against supporting our schools?
I'm not going to get in our view with you because this is what gone on, like, so...
No, it's support, why do you think it's appropriate for us to spend public money to support the schools?
How do you think we get to high school?
Through a referendum with a public vote.
So you have a referendum on the $10,000 to pay for the two teachers?
It doesn't make any sense.
Three, sorry.
I'm ready.
I am too.
Is the $200,000 for MAC in that motion? It is not. How are we going to handle it?
Well, that was, we're going to handle that.
The other we have is the second discussion.
After we handle the motion on the donation, or we could go the other way around?
We should talk about everything that's in there.
Why wouldn't we not? Since we're, I mean, this is a motion that basically accepts the budget at our modification. No, like I said, it's accept the budget. Why wouldn't we exclude it?
This is good sound. Accept is, I mean, the budget, the motion is on, it's on the table, is the budget with the additions that have been directed.
We're directing staff. We haven't approved the budget, they'll go back, make those changes, and then we have to go through the budget approval process, which is a vote, two votes, correct?
Yes.
So what we're doing is we're closing the book on the budget, saying this is our direction.
But we're closing the book on the budget without consideration of how we're going to deal with the additional cost for MAC.
That, that could, you know, that's immediately after this, I mean, until...
We're saying that could happen in this year's budget.
Correct. We're taking these one at a time.
As long as you say it's not going to...
Well, you can bring them up, I mean, we're not going to close it down.
The project, the project for MAC is going to be complete when theoretically.
It's not going to be completed by July 1st. So doing anything, this year's budget is probably, has no, has no impact, because...
Once it begins, though, it is, it's a, if it were to begin in the next fiscal year, we would expect it to be complete in next fiscal year, right?
We ask for the realization of all this involved? I think so, in the office.
Nine days. Okay, so I mean, that's, so there's no stretching, where I'm going with that is there's no stretch on that 500 into the next fiscal year to make it more profitable. It's going to happen in the next...
It would be, that project would be relatively short-lived.
Yeah. But good, I mean, that's a good thing from a, from a MAC standpoint.
Theoretically, you could take some out of this year's budget and put a fund for it, but...
Well, okay, as long as we're handling it the way we're going to do with it.
My intention is to bring up the donation piece and then let's talk about the MAC after that. I was ready to have a resolution. Let's move on to the...
Is there any more discussion?
Be clear, and it looks like three people are about to vote for this, that you are voting to spend down below what the council has recommended that we, where we keep our general fund.
In your opinion?
I'll be, I'll be very clear.
This is not...
I totally, totally disagree with what you just said.
Is it an opinion that 35% is what this council voted on? That's a question. Is that an opinion or is that a fact, Boye?
That's a fact. Our minimum that we would strive to maintain is 35%.
So Amy, that's not an opinion. That's what the council voted...
No, you believe it's going to fall, the opinion is, you believe it's going to fall below 35. I do not.
Then you don't believe the budget, the preliminary budget as presented?
Correct.
And we should make a decision based on your belief?
Or yours.
I'm making it based on, out of my belief, because I'm not qualified to make this decision. I'm making it based on the people who are paid to talk.
It's your belief. Any more discussion on the budget? Motion's on the table. We ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Four to one.
Next issue, and I'll bring it up. I make a motion that we, because of the shortfall in MEF and what the schools have asked, I don't want to go all the way, let me, let me simplify. I make a motion that we donate $9,000 to MEF specifically for the funding of, to help with the funding of the art teachers and STEM teachers in the elementary schools.
That was part of your last motion.
I'm sorry?
That was part of your last motion.
I know, but we had to do a separate one according to...
That's a resolution that will have to be passed.
Okay, so what, how do I make a motion that we put that resolution on?
You just need to...
I don't need to?
No, you made the motion and that's included in the budget.
That's included in this budget.
I thought you wanted a separate resolution just for that, though.
No, you have to have both.
Okay.
What you just voted on, put that money in the 18, 19 budget.
And created the resolution?
No. After we do the research and make sure that that is a legitimate contribution that we're allowed to make, then we will have to draft an agreement, just like we've just done with the Lions, and we'll have to draft a resolution that will allow that. You don't, the fact that it's in the budget... The fact that it's in the budget dictates that you want to make that contribution, so we will...
I misunderstood. I thought you needed that particular... And I know that Dick wanted to discuss it, so if you want...
The resolution... While we're allowed to transfer that money, we have to have a resolution, and that will come after July 1st.
So the next issue is the MAC. As I say, we've got a couple options. And I think we're $100,000 off. Dan does not.
Dan is going by the numbers as presented by staff. There are compliments.
Is that capital outlay that... I mean, can you look at the general fund for capital outlay for a building investment?
True.
So then that would be a point of bank board.
In that instance, I would agree with Dan. We're going below 35%. That's where we're at, $100,000 off. So... But I think there is an extra $100,000 in there for it. So my suggestion is we're $100,000 off. If I heard Dan correctly, he believes we've got to come up with $200,000.
That's what Boyd just told us. That's the bid increase was about 60 something percent. That's $200,000. That's not a belief. That's a fact.
I'm not arguing that one.
You just...
So what are we going to do? Are we going to amend the budget that we just passed in order to increase it by $200,000?
You didn't just... You didn't pass the budget. You just... You gave a direction statement. You approved what we have to do. You can do whatever else you want with MAC.
Is it possible it takes two years to get the MAC done?
No. That's what I just asked. Is it possible that the driver field project takes more time than that?
I don't think so.
Is it possible the driver field project doesn't come through? Possible we don't get them right?
It is a possibility. And one is ready. One is shuttle-ready, and the other's not.
And you have $400,000 that we have budgeted that's not being used.
Then I think, the way I see things, and I have a bias, which I will publicly state, but nonetheless, I kind of have birds in hand, and I would go... I would go ahead and complete the MAC project that earned the $200,000, and we'll see and deal with the driver field grant when the time comes.
Deverge it from where?
When you say divert?
Well, you have $400,000... You have $400,000 net in the budget for driver field for a grant that may not come.
Right.
And I'm saying, let's take $200 of that dedicated to MAC and finish this project, and then we'll deal with driver field project when that happens.
Okay.
So we're taking the time from...
Theoretically, and reflect... If it's reflected in the budget, it's just taking an extra $200,000 on it first.
Yeah.
And we just... You know, we have kicked the can literally down the road.
Not... You're just saying an extra $200,000 out of reserve. You're saying take driver field down...
And deal with it.
And so we're not changing the balance.
Didn't we have to go commit... We don't have to commit... We don't have to accept that grant if it comes in, right? So that's a choice at that time?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's a nothing thing. I mean, I'm going to pick one versus the other, but I...
So how much would that be that we're putting in?
Decreasing the expenditure for driver field means we're also going to have to decrease the anticipated grant revenue, so there's going to be a certain amount of costs that we have to account for.
But our net is 400. If they're saying, well, we're going to use 200 of that for MAC, that doesn't then equate to an additional 200 out of fund balance. That's the point I'm making.
Right.
You're reducing one line and replacing it with another.
Yeah, you're moving that 200 somewhere unbalanced.
But $100 of that is covered by grant funds, so we will have to decrease the revenue by $100,000.
This is no difference than when we had the fire station of a budget, and we had found a way of taking care of it. We need to get this MAC done, so we got to go and just do the...
That's the priority, so I'm waiting to move forward on that.
I have a question, so just maybe another question. So does this make we allocated $330,000 to the repairs of the MAC, right? We voted on that at council, and this would be an additional 200? So a total of $530,000 putting into the MAC for the last 18 months?
Yeah.
Three. Well, 300 was the original.
And how much have they raised and contributed, do you know, Dick?
They've raised 35... Well, over the years, the MAC board has raised, I think the number is $27,000, $27,000 over the past three or four years. The current group, is that fair enough? Has raised about $7,000, $8,000. A total of about $34,000, $35,000, which has been dedicated to this project. They think they can raise more. Who knows? Time will tell. But I just don't see how to pull them back on this project at this point in time. We have waited and waited and waited, and I agree with Dan. That's a vital part of our community and our culture, and we need to go ahead and fix it and get on with it.
Make a...
I'll make that a motion.
What is it?
To divert... Out of... What's the right terminology, Carol? What am I suggesting?
You're going to decrease the budget for the Marion Driver Field and increase your budget for the MAC project?
For the MAC project, $200,000. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, first and second discussion. Just a... Just a more of a point.
Legality.
Not even legality, but I mean, it's an $800,000 project. It's not something we can say, hey, now it's a $400,000 project. Or can we? I mean, it's already submitted as an $800,000 project if it goes in.
We... Any adjustments would have to be approved.
All right. So that... What are your thoughts on that?
I think we're going to have a problem getting much of anything done for $400,000. I don't think we can rebuild fields, let alone... And anything that we do that project, we have to do the ADA...
And I don't think... Yeah, I don't think Dick is saying we're not doing the Marion Driver. What he's saying is we're going to cross that hurdle when the grant gets... If we receive the grant. And it may jump our minds. So that is... Yeah, I mean, that's theoretically kicking that can down the road. Ultimately, if we agree to do both, we're talking about taking an additional $200,000 out of reserves if revenues stay where we're projecting them at.
These are long-term projects that we have to support, so I don't have a problem.
I am totally supportive of the MAC, but I want to just clarify that, like, does it stop here? Because I remember a year ago, we said... I forget what the amount was, and then I think some of the discussion was, well, then it's going to be more money and more money and more money. And I want to save the MAC. I believe there's value in it, too, so we agree. But, you know, to go from $300,000 to $530,000, are we done after this? Is the MAC operational and ready to rock and roll? Or is it going to be another 200 next year?
There's still a lot of costs associated with that.
So what I would like to... I just would like to see more fundraising efforts to help offset that.
We all would, and I think the organization is ranking up to work toward that objective.
I think, yeah, there's a lot of good people on this, and are doing some good things, so hopefully we can get some...
Yeah, and I am looking at these numbers and asking the questions. I am...
I think the next... My guess is the next task, which actually came up before the price came in so much higher, was, hey, let's add the heating and air conditioning into it. Wasn't that... Or am I missing that?
It doesn't include it.
No, I know, but I'm saying that's probably the next...
I think the 300 number that we appropriated was not based on fact. It was budget.
It was a mistake.
You know, we had no idea what the real number was going to be.
It was based on estimates that were given by the same company that did the bid, just for the record.
It's also done over a year ago. Two years ago.
And you have almost flat inflation, and even if you look at their... They projected a 6% increase, and we ended up with a 16% increase.
My guess is two years ago, when the economy really hadn't turned it, you'd probably be a little closer to that price now, but there's a lot of people out there working.
It is, and we have one respondent. I always qualify my answers. I think so.
It's good.
The Green Brothers is very reputable. Who is against?
The only way to look at it is we should, hindsight 2020, we borrowed money, paid for it then, and we would have added $300,000 instead of where we're at here, but then that's the same thing.
Funding wasn't the issue. It was getting the project approval through the state. You got to remember, we just got that three, four weeks ago. It wasn't our holdup on that. As soon as we got that, the documents have been finished, the bids have been led. We're... I mean, funding issues here haven't been the issue. It's just a process that took a long time.
Any more discussion? Ready to vote?
I'm ready.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No. I think it's four to one.
Yeah.
Four to one, Carol. Can I say who's opposed? All right. Are we done? We could be, but there are other... There's one issue that we have to address in other business, but anything else in the budget? Any other direction that you need, Boyd? Hey. Boyd? Anything else? Okay. Other business. We have to... One of the things on other business is we have... We've said that after that, we'll time to digest Boyd's presentation, that we talk about potentially how we move forward for the water. And I think Boyd suggested that we have a public input meeting that was not like the other three, where council and the two companies were just more so public employees directly questioning the council. Is that the direction you were going to go? And I wish we could do that.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea.
I'm not sure yet, but the point was that... And Boyd suggested that we have a public input meeting where the public, instead of questioning the companies and us there, it's more public forum. Is that what you call it? Would you call it public forum?
I would call it public input.
Is that... Could that be done next month? Or is that a separate?
I think they would do it separately.
Town Hall, Jim? Is that door here? Do you think we'd be okay here?
I would probably go to Marter, maybe.
Okay. I'd like to get that done next week if we could.
Can't be for an extended time. I'm out of town until June 1st.
I don't know if I'm willing to wait that long. I've made a... There's a motion on the table.
We did make a motion for a public input meeting. I did not hear you set a date. There has not yet been a second, but we need to ask if there is a second.
Thank you.
I agree, we need to have a public input meeting. I believe we should have it within the next two weeks, so this is dragging on. I would humbly and precipitously request that you not do this while I'm out of town. This is too important. I'm not willing to wait, so it's up to you guys.
I mean, we've had three meetings already. We've had input from...
The day?
Germanians.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Doctor, but the day was not a issue on this motion, so if we want to vote on the idea of having a public meeting, let's do that. I have a date later.
Give me a calendar up.
Okay, so motion, a second. Is there any more discussion on whether or not we should have a meeting?
A public...
We're not saying next week. Three weeks from now, we're just saying a meeting, right?
Public input meeting. Is that okay, Dan?
So we should be able to vote on that and then decide the date, correct?
Dan, is that what you intended? Public input meeting? Yeah, I'd like to amend it to have a date, and a date that all council members can attend. I'll have to get a second on that.
Yes. Well, if you're going to amend it, then Amy has to be willing to amend her second. Otherwise, she needs to vote on the original motion.
Vote on the original motion, then.
And I want to tell me when you... What is today? Today is the night.
So when is it?
So you're going to be back tomorrow?
I'll leave.
Until June?
It's week of... June 1st.
I have no problem making sure we don't set the vote until Dan gets back, but I don't think it's a whole different public meeting we've all been to and missed and made public meetings since.
Right. Not everybody was... Every one was supposed to be watching.
Yes. I just think it's an attempt at error of process. And you return when?
There's a motion, a second.
Two more? Right. So there was not an amendment... Not a second to amend that motion. Any other discussion on the motion on the table, then we can discuss date. All those in favor of having a public... Whatever the motion is on the table, please say aye. Any opposed?
This is a resolution. Eventually, at whatever time it has one reading or is it an ordinance?
This will have to... Once we make a decision, it will have to go to the planning commission?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll have a public input meeting, and I think the next regular meeting at that or at the end of that meeting, we can decide if we need to have an additional public input meeting. I disagree with that. I mean, for second discussion, I'd like to toss out that you don't take an offer for something this high where someone just walks up and makes you an offer. You negotiate that offer. That requires time. That requires research, and we're leaving money on the table that we do not do it that way. We're in no hurry. There's no rush for us to do this.
I don't think anybody took that off the table at all.
Well, you're... What was I saying?
Once... To answer the question, once a decision is made, then it needs to go to the planning commission for review and recommendation. That is not binding recommendation. Then it would come back to council. Okay? That's how it happened, and it would likely be a resolution.
Which is one read.
Right. But before we now and when that decision is made is what Dan's talking about and what about, and what I certainly have concern about, and being very careful as we go along with this, that we, we don't get out of bounds and limit ourselves in opportunity to negotiate.
I was trying to, I was trying to explain some of the scenarios, one is which, after that public input meeting, we decide if we need additional public input meetings, we can decide if we're ready to take some sort of action on it, we can decide if we want to negotiate with both firms. So there's several options, we're allowed to negotiate with both firms prior to making a decision. So I'm not willing to wait three weeks to have a public input meeting and then put off making our decision where we're going forward. I don't think it's fair to us, I don't think it's fair to the council. I support why that's not fair, I support what it hurts to wait. What does fair mean? Dictionary? No, what does fair mean in this instance? Is it giving some sort of advantage to someone? Because that's what fairness is. Lack of fairness. Waiting doesn't give anyone any advantage, it gives... So back to what I was saying, after that meeting, we can make that decision, or we can wait till our next, next agenda meeting and decide where we'll go, or how we'll move forward. So I don't think we need to hold off on the public input meeting, and if we decide, and I would agree with Dan that, you know, before a decision's made, we can make sure that he's back.
We have an agenda meeting in May.
Yeah, we have twenty-fifth, Friday the twenty-fifth, oh, starts at twelve, twelve p.m.?
What are you touching about?
Twelve at the Public Works facility, and then one o'clock here for the meeting.
May?
Yeah, May twenty-fifth. Starts here at one thirty, I'm sorry. Is that right? Let's figure out my calendar.
One thirty?
Yeah, so it's twelve at Public Works, which is, is that a ribbon cutting or something?
Yeah.
And then I have one thirty here. We just talked, we talked that we're not going to move meetings when we start to do that, and I think it just causes problems. Remind, I've lost it, is it one o'clock now?
It's twenty minutes.
One o'clock?
Public Works open house will be at noon. Unless they're also going to have a tree dedication there about eleven forty-five, if council could be there a little early, that would be appreciated.
Okay.
About eleven forty-five at Public Works, we'll convene here at one o'clock for the work session.
And it gives everybody enough time for launching, getting back here. Okay.
And that's the, is that the second, I mean, is that a Friday?
Twenty-fifth, yeah. Normal, wonderful work session date, we're just pushing the...
Do you want us there at eleven forty-five, or is the dedication at eleven forty-five?
You can be there at eleven forty-five, that'll be good. It'll just take a few minutes.
Okay.
I can be at this public input meeting on the twenty-ninth or the thirty-first.
That's it?
Well, probably not it, but that's kind of what I'm throwing out there.
What was your thought that you're going to be available, from what dates?
It would come later, the sixteenth of June, after that, I'm gone.
So...
So in May, but I've got a couple, I've got a little grandkid graduation, so I'm, I'm not going next, so I don't know. I'm good next week, Tuesday the fifteenth.
I can't do Tuesday.
Thursday, May seventeenth, I suggest it's in the evening like we've held the other ones.
I can do seventeenth.
I'm good. You good on seventeenth?
It is a court night also.
But we're going to go, yeah, okay. Seventeenth? Bob, can you do seventeenth?
I'll do that.
Okay. And then we'll, on the twenty-fifth, which is a week and a day, we'll then decide how we're going to move forward.
What time is seventeenth?
Seven, seven? Boy, I wonder if in this meeting, we're talking about that we shouldn't start off with even a reprise of your presentation to all those present, because it...
No, I think that's a great idea.
Really good, I mean, because it really helps.
I think the other thing you should do is give a summary of the two firms that proposes and that. You know, I wouldn't go into huge detail because we've been dealing with this, but here's, here's what Tennessee American said, here's what Walden Ridge Utility did, here's what we presented here, so everybody gets a quick snapshot of what we'll be discussing.
Well, what I think, those presentations are pretty hard to tell.
Yeah.
But neither of the proposals address the issues specifically that Bo... And I think we need to make that distinction.
Absolutely, absolutely. I don't think it hurts to, you know, the proposals have been, and when do we say that?
Fair, fair to the people who made the proposals, that they weren't asked to come to, to...
To write, to address that. Yeah, all right, so May seventeenth at seven p.m.
How, how, are we going to have a time limit on that?
Two hours?
I was going to say fifteen.
And then we'll have another time to follow it?
Seven p.m., is that, I'm behind you.
Is that, I mean, can you get there early?
Yeah, I can, I can do six thirty.
Six thirty to eight thirty.
Seventeenth?
Yeah. No, seventeenth, yes, sorry.
And Dan, when do you get back?
June first.
June first, so then, can we go ahead and schedule one of them while we have a meeting?
I don't know if we need to have a second one. I think we need to decide at the twenty-fifth meeting if we believe we do need to have a second one. We've had three so far, so. I think we need to decide, though, what that meeting looks like. Is it just us? Because if we're questioned directly, we may just be hearing opinions and may not be able to answer some of the more strategic questions laid out. Or do we want to have the companies there so they can just, just redunement of what we've done before?
What do you suggest, Bo?
I think that's, that's up to you. We, we've provided those opportunities on three different occasions. That's really...
I think, if somebody stands up and says, well, Tennessee, I don't like Tennessee American, or I don't like Walden Ridge, and they failed this sort of test last week, there's no defense to that, really, and we can't get any backup facts.
Well, that's why I ask, I think it's important that Bo leads off, and I mean, that really, to me, should be the essence of what we're talking about.
Okay.
Is built, is how we, how we structure, and either internally or externally, or cooperatively or collectively, whatever you want to do, to meet the needs of the community in the next so many years.
Note that by having this one out of town, you're going to have to incur expense for somebody else to do audio for you, because I'm not here to run all those, whatever meeting we've had. I also, to speak to Dick's question from Water Me, and I appreciate that, I think you were just spot on when you said, I want to know what each one of the council members believes on this subject. And I think that's the question that gets asked by citizens at that, and so we don't need to have the companies there, we are the ones who are going to make a decision that affects property owned by the citizens of the town, they need to know what each one of us believes about this, and have as much opportunity to ask us questions about that as they need.
Yes, but, and Bo gave me a lesson on this some, a few days ago, because we are definitely, we're, we're about going to make a big time of location here. We don't necessarily want to give away our indications of where we're headed, and so yes, I'm still, I want to know what you all are thinking, but I'm also very now attuned to making sure that we don't spill beans, so if you want, you know, whatever, whatever negotiating tactic works in our favor, we want to, we want to employ that. So somewhere in the middle there, I guess, I don't know, it's new.
Yeah, it's, we had three council members at the Water Me, and they were ready to vote.
I think it was, the deputy they said they were getting further in their research, not ready to decide.
And I don't think we want to disclose how. Am I right? I mean, I think that's right. I think it'd be a mistake for us to disclose how we're voting.
Absolutely, and I don't think we have to. I don't think so, really.
Just so I remember, Dan, when are you going to be out of town?
I'm gone until June first.
From when day?
Will be Friday.
Other than, okay, so we got that, that done, and we'll discuss on the twenty-fifth after how we move forward. And I fully support to make sure that Dan is back, at least councils in town, before any decision is made. Other than other business, any? Just to be clear on that, it would be impossible for us to be close to a decision because you have to wait for a planning commission cycle, meeting, you have to wait for any re... There's going to be research that needs to be done, whoever's negotiating, any potential, one of the potentials that might come back, might need to ask these companies to represent their data in a different way, perhaps that doesn't have a five-year cap, so that we can get a better indication of what it looks like for taxes. There's just all kinds of things that need to take place, and all of that is going to take time, that's why I do not understand why we're rushing.
No one's rushing anything, I think you were just trying to be courteous, that this council would never entertain that, having the vote that you're here.
I would also like, well, we are rushing because you have a selection. You could wait until I'm back, and that would not affect any of this, but you've made a decision, and I got to live with that. But I also think that this is big enough, and this is important enough, that it should probably wait until the next council, so that that council, so in effect, the citizens have an opportunity to decide and have, have some say in this thing.
The next council meeting is the eleventh of June? Yes. No, we moved it, that's...
No.
No.
So we moved?
The June one?
It's the eighteenth.
Yeah, I can't imagine it.
Eighteenth, the twenty-ninth, decision by June eleventh.
Which one?
June meeting was set to the eighteenth and the twenty-ninth.
Okay.
But, but that decision, assuming it occurred on the eighteenth, would send the issue to the planning commission in July, correct?
When's planning commission meetings?
Just the first.
First, and you're gone.
I'm gone.
January, in the twenty-ninth, right?
Yes, yes. And then, but then the planning commission, we don't fit, and so the earliest theoretically council could refer would be the ninth.
At July?
The next time, as it looks right now, the next time all council members, unless there's something I don't know about, the next time all council members are going to be at a regular meeting will be July ninth.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, Carol, just one other question.
There's nothing that says we must make a decision, I care more.
I'm just saying, the discussion was, wait till everybody is present, then it looks like that's going to be July ninth to fifth.
Carol, what night's court again?
That is the night of the seventeenth.
Is it seventeenth, and that's a Thursday?
That one is yes.
Okay. Is it always on that middle Wednesday, or middle Thursday?
No, they're usually the first Tuesday and the second Thursday.
She's been cut down.
Actually, the first Tuesday and the Thursday following the second Tuesday.
That's right.
Thank you, I was getting confused by that.
I would have missed my court though. All right, any, any other business? All right, motion to adjourn? Meeting's adjourned.